All right, we're going to move on to, oh, we're still on the productive business. We're going to move on to item B, City Clerk.
Item 6B, receive the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-22, and staff presentations on the Enterprise and Internal Service Funds, Budget Hearing 1.
Good evening, once again, City Council. I'm here to present the proposed budget. We did have a meeting last Tuesday where the City Council received an in-depth presentation of the city manager's proposed budget, as well as provided direction. The goal of tonight is not to recap all of that information that we went through in three hours on last Tuesday, but it's to conclude a part of that presentation that we did not have time to get to, as well as give a high-level overview of the proposed budget with the note that there was directions from City Council that we will be returning with some revisions to the proposed budget. So, objective, as I said, is to continue those discussions. I received the presentation on the city's Enterprise and Internal Service Funds. You have a number of department directors and staff here to support those conversations. And again, as always, we would like you to ask questions and provide direction in regard to the proposed budget. Should you have questions as we go through the presentation, please feel free to ask them. We are covering a lot of information, and what we've done in the past, which I think has been successful, is that we pause after every section to ask questions. And if City Council members have a burning question on a particular slide, we pause and address that question. I think that that has been helpful. The agenda for tonight is we will provide a highlight of the overall budget presentation that's provided on June 1, and then the other components that we talked about, Enterprise and Internal Service. A budget development process. It is important to note that the city manager's budget instructions to departments was to maintain status quo budgeting with enhancements. Only the most needed enhancements and aligned to a City Council priority focus area. Our departments initiated or begun the budget with a baseline that was maintaining current operations. Increases to the baseline were really limited to inflationary items, things outside the city's control, and again, enhancement requests aligned to a City Council priority focus area, and also aimed at meeting our reserve policy targets. What's on the screen is the series of four public meetings that we have on the proposed budget. We are here tonight for the second meeting. Our very next meeting will be tomorrow night, where you'll receive a presentation of the proposed budget, as well as what's not shown on the screen. If you'll receive an update based on the changes that we talked about on June 1. Proposed budget discussion highlights. So, overall, the proposed budget for next fiscal year, which is a July fiscal year, July 1, 2030, this total city budget, all funds, is $193 million. So, that is the proposed budget in all of our funds. That includes our sewer, water, Enterprise Funds, as well as our General Fund. Our General Fund, which is oftentimes referred to as the city's general checking account, is $51 million. They're a total of 246 full-time FTE positions in the baseline budget. And there are over 100, 104 capital improvement projects that are within the budget for staff to work on. I will tag team this presentation with our Finance Director, and so I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Chin Yu-Sun, to take us through the next few slides with regard to our General Fund summary, revenues, and a highlight. Chin Yu?
Thank you, your ma'am. Chin Yu-Sun, Finance Director. Good evening, Mayor, and honourable council members. And what we talk about is the General Fund summary and then some other financial highlights from now on. So, this slide is giving you an overview of the General Fund budget for the next year. As you can see, we're expecting the General Fund operating, General Fund revenue to amount of $50.5 million next year, and that is slightly behind on the expenditure. Expenditure is going to be $51.1 million. We're expecting a deficit about just shy of $600,000 at the end of the fiscal year. The fund balance is awarded by $1.976 million. This is our baseline budget. No enhancement had been included in this budget. Next slide, please. As we all know, General Fund revenues are made of a variety of tax revenues, including property tax, sales tax, hotel tax, also known as a TOT tax, and vehicle license tax. And then there are some other departmental charges, and then transfers of other revenues. Also make the whole pie of General Fund revenue. Expenditures side, majority of the expenditure from the departments when it comes from Safety Services, in Fire, and Police Departments. And the next biggest department budget is Community Services. They're taking about 14%. General Administration is made up of a variety of departments, including City Manager, City Explorer, City Council, Finance, HR, and then IT. Next slide, please. So, this is another look of our General Fund revenue and expenditure. So, we talked about this before. This is a look of looking at the General Fund revenues from the operations standpoint of view. So, at the end, at the beginning of next fiscal year, we're expecting to have a General Fund balance of about $2.6 million. And then we're expecting that operating revenue from General Fund, excluding any kind of fund transfers, will be $49.9 million. And expenditure, of course, will still be at $51.1 million. So, the operating surplus deficit would actually be $1.2 million. So, our fund balance without any transfer at the end of next fiscal year will be right at $1.4. In our proposed budget, we're proposing to transfer $600,000 from Measure G to keep the fund balance of General Fund to $2 million, so that it will be in line with our policy targets of $1.5 million.
And I'll just add here that recognizing this comments from members of the City Council, that that transfer from Measure G be aligned to specific funding items within the city operations, similar to how the allocation was in the current fiscal year, what we did here has a tendency with just a Measure G transfer to the General Fund. And so, we are.
Here, I would like to give you some highlights on General Fund revenue. Property tax is to increase moderately with the housing market in impact. The oil tax will increase about 11% when economic activities increase after the state fully opens. And TOT will increase about 72% from this current fiscal year, but still more than half behind the pre-covid level. Vehicle license fees will be 9% lower as most schools are commuting from basic schools. Next slide, please. So, this is a look by numbers, as what I just highlighted before. All in all, with all these tax and major taxes and fees, we're expecting 2020, 21, 22 proposed revenue budget of $32.1 million from property tax, sales tax, TOT, vehicle license fee, car room fees, and this is like that. So, on the expenditure side, we're seeing some pressures, you know, rising pressures on pension costs. That's just new, that is not new. We have been experiencing several years in a row. And we also know that the housing and other insurance costs are on the rise. And we are also facing uni-annual negotiations. Our contracts are to expire at the end of this calendar year. The status quo baseline budget means reduced staffing, limited ability for enhanced facility and infrastructure maintenance, and significant backlog of capital projects still remains. We don't have any, we don't have an easy decision made, even in this year's budget session. General Fund, this is a slide of the General Fund expenditure broken down by department. And as you can see, General Government, that's the General Administration, is going to amount to about $5.89 million next year. Police and Fire is going to be slightly over $31 million in total. And then there is 3.7% from Public Work, a little bit over $3 million from CEB, and 7.8 million from Community Services. And with some non-departmental adjustments, the total of General Fund expenditures will be $51.1 million. Next slide, please. Long-term look, we're expecting General Fund to gradually improve in, over the next few years. Hopefully, with increased economic activities, we'll see a General Fund will really take off by the year of fiscal year 2024, 25. Of course, we have a lot of assumptions put into this long-range look. We need to, we're, you know, with more developing economy, we may revise our forecast in the next couple of years. So, in the, in conclusion, General, we expect the General Fund revenue to, General Fund sees a gradual increase in tax revenues. We are taking a conservative assumption for development projects. Personal cost in this long-range look will increase about 3% to 5%. There is no significant service line or changes in this long-term range outlook. We, in the future years, we're assuming some fund reduction will be required to balance the budget. Okay. Challenges we are facing in this fiscal year. As I had mentioned, we have a collective bargaining agreement to expire at the end of calendar year. And we all know the Stormwater Enterprise Fund is facing negative, facing a deficit at the end of this fiscal year. City Natural Resources Enterprise Fund, the deficit will increase. We need more investment in personnel, and in IT maintenance and investments. And also, we need some funding, we need more funding implemented vehicles. And we, based on the city's fiscal budget, reserve policy, we have some targets set out for the reserves, General Fund. We are hoping to get a $1.5 million minimum reserve. Based on the proposed budget, we're hoping with additional transfer from Measure G, of course, that's, we're hoping the General Fund balance will be $1.976 million. But I know this is in a purview of the council. We're working on that. This number for the General Fund balance, the General Fund reserve may change depending on the direction provided by the council. We do have a General Fund reserve account. That's really our true savings account, where our target is to have 25% of the budget expenditures. We're only going to have $12.39 at the end of this fiscal year. I believe that is behind our target, the target of 12%, 25% is about $12.89. So, we're about $500,000 behind. And General Fund, the capital reserve is expected to have $5 million goal. And in the next fiscal year, we're going to end with a reserve balance at $9.4 million. And City Manager has mentioned before, this has a majority, quite a big proportion of this $9.4 million includes a mutual payment of $4.5 million. So, these money, that money has been earmarked and designated for projects we are expecting to use in the next couple of years. Emergency Disaster Fund, we have a target of $3 million. And as you can see, will be high by the end of next fiscal year. We expect that that balance will be around $2.79. Okay. Although, from the last, previous slide, the total of the core reserve I talked about amounts to about $26.39, $23.49. These are the unrestricted reserve the city actually has. However, we have some significant deficits in City Enterprise Funds and Stormwater Enterprise. The deficits adds to about over $15 million. So, in reality, our unrestricted reserve is only going to have about $10.7 million. And then we also have about $3.39 in reserve. All in all, the net General Fund reserve is just around $14.1 million.
Okay, so with regards to the proposed enhancements, we had a significant discussion last Tuesday on this. There's a total of $3.25 million of proposed enhancements. The feedback we heard from the City Council was that the position recommendations for Measure G, consider moving those, or a significant amount of those, to the American Rescue Act funds, as well as take a look at the other expenditures out of Measure G and give significant preference to Measure G revenues for rolled-way expenditures. So, the enhancement requests are currently under revision, and we will, at the beginning of tomorrow's workshop, present a revision to build enhancement requests. The bulk of tonight's conversation was due to be dedicated to the Enterprise Funds and Financial Operating Summary, so we can get through those slides. And so, why don't I pause here and ask if there are any questions from the City Council? I know we had a three-hour presentation on Tuesday, but if there are any additional questions, happy to take them now before going into the next section.
Any questions from colleagues? And just for myself, City Manager, what you said was that is under revision tomorrow, that would be shown. I had some comments on that, just general comments, not specific, but maybe it's best waited for tomorrow. Would that be fair?
Mr. Mayor, up to you. Happy to take the feedback now or tomorrow.
Well, I think it's in general and going forward in regards to specific Measure G. So, maybe I should wait to see, and then I can encompass all of those, my personal comments, and then just on this budget and moving forward. So, we don't get ahead of that. Any questions? I'm seeing none at this point, so if you wouldn't mind proceeding.
Okay, so the next section is our interim Public Works Director, Haywon Ritchie. That will provide an overview of the Enterprise Department of our Water Division that is within Public Works. So, Interim Director Ritchie.
Thank you, City Manager, Gregan. Good evening, Honourable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Haywon Ritchie, the city's interim Public Works Director. I do have the three next Enterprise Funds, which are Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater. So, quick overview of the Water. There are 18.20 full-time employees. They consist of one Water System Conservation Manager, Maintenance Service Manager, Water Quality Technician, two lead maintenance workers, and eight maintenance workers. And this fund also supports various managers and supportive staff, including secretaries and analysts. This division ensures the safe and efficient production and delivery of potable water. They manage water conservation programs, respond to urgent community needs, conduct routine maintenance, and ensure regulatory compliance. Next slide, please. So, this chart shows a 5% annual rate increase through this year, which is 20, this year 20, 21. The blue bars are fund balance. The green, and I will note that it does go into the red. Sorry, which year is that? That is year 24, 25 forecast. But I will comment on that in the next slide. The green line is revenue. The black dash line shows the combined operating and capital expenditures. The 2021 budget includes carryover of anticipated projects into the next year. Sorry, the 2122 budget includes carryover into these are projects. There are larger-scale projects that are anticipated in the out-years, including pump station and tank replacement and installation projects, along with continued main replacement projects in the avenues. So, that is the peak in the expenditure line that you see. Next slide, please. This slide shows, what I would like to do first is focus on the second and third. So, if you look at the revenues and the expenditures, largely, they remain fairly flat. And then similarly with the operating surplus, there remains fairly consistent. There are debt proceeds that are shown in the next slide after the subtotal, as well as CIP. So, what the CIP numbers show is that in 2021, it's estimated about $6.5 million worth of capital improvements were made to the water system. The next year's proposed budget also includes $14.5 million. Previous, this amended budget had substantially more capital projects. There are some carryforwards, because larger projects do carry some larger project balances. However, staff did make an effort to, oh, sorry. Staff did make an effort to defund some of those projects that they're in design, and to fund some of those in the later out-years. I could keep going. So, notable budget items include the cancellation of 5% water rate increase in the next fiscal year, and budgeting for a new water rate study is included. Accomplishments include completing the citywide water main leak assessment survey, repairing 105 main break, water main breaks, beginning the water master plan update, as well as the 2020 urban water management plan. Completed various annual reporting to the State Water Resources Control Board. Completed annual cross-connecting survey in conjunction with San Mateo County Environmental Health Services. Removed sediment and cleaned interior of four water tanks. And reviewed and implemented recommended safety, security features at water facilities. Key initiatives include completing those plans, completing the water structure risk and resilience assessment, updating the drinking water emergency response plan, removing sediment from the remaining four tanks, and developing long-term preventive maintenance programs. Staff performs pump station and water well maintenance and inspections, water quality sampling and testing, proactive and reactive maintenance repairs to all distribution piping, customer service response for private property repair issues and service needs, water meter installations, and working with contractors when switching over to new water system piping from new rehabilitation projects. Next slide, please. Next is the Wastewater Division. This division consists of 15.75 FTEs. It consists of one Maintenance Service Manager, two pump mechanics, one lead maintenance worker, and eight maintenance staff. This also supports managing and supportive staff, administrative staff. Responsibilities include sewer collection system operations and maintenance, responding to urgent community needs and regulatory compliance. Staff performs pump station maintenance and inspections, proactive gravity cleaning, CCTV inspections, customer service response for private sewer laterals, manhole inspections, and planned or reactive repairs to the gravity collection system. The city's GIS is also updated to reflect system changes. Next slide, please. So, similar to the chart we saw for Water, this shows 5% annual rate increases through this year, which is fiscal year 2021. The blue bars are fund balances, all shown in the positive. Green line is revenue. The black dash line shows combined operating and capital expenditures. The budget includes carryover and anticipated projects, which is the spike that you see. Larger-scale projects are anticipated in the out-years, including ongoing main replacement projects in the avenues, as well as pump station replacement and forced main replacement projects. Next slide, please. This table shows that operating revenues are largely flat. The operating expenditures go up, and this is mostly caused by interdepartmental allocation increase. There are one-time larger-scale CIP projects, such as pump station enforcement replacement projects and extensive sewer main replacements in the out-years. And similar to the Water Fund, you see the debt proceeds, as well as the CIP. So, in fiscal year 2021, is estimated about $7.4 million worth of capital improvements were performed on the system. Notable accomplishments include, because this one is a huge accomplishment, is that there's lifting of the consent decree, which the city was under. This is no small feat. This was done with combination of operations and engineering staff having a rigorous program to correct the system and to execute multiple projects. The operation staff completed 576 video inspections of pipes and manholes, completed 31 mainline spot repairs, managed point-of-sale private sewer lateral inspections, and updated the city's geographic information system. Notable budget items include cancellation of the 5% water rate increase in this next fiscal year, and budgeting for new wastewater rate study is included. Upcoming key projects include multiple sewer line replacements, as well as the Crestwood Pump Station Improvement Project. Next slide, please. The Stormwater Division. It consists of five maintenance workers and portions of managers and administrative support staff. Staff performs drain inlet cleaning, seasonal response to flooding, street sweeping, and response to San Bruno Response. Next slide, please. This chart does show a structural imbalance in the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. There is an existing stormwater fee, where most property owners pay approximately $46 annually per parcel. This is not enough revenue to sustain ongoing operations requirements, let alone equipment and capital needs. The stormwater rate is assessed on the annual property bill, property tax bill, and the rate is $4.1964 cents per thousand square feet on the property, with a minimum bill of just $46.16. There is an effort to, there's an initiative to, instituted a storm drainage and flood protection fee to help correct this balance. Similar to the other enterprise charge, the blue bars are showing revenue, and the red bars are for negative fund balance. The black dash line include operating budget, but also CIP, project carryover, and projects. This, the reason that you see that spike in the expenditures is that this also includes various capitol projects, including this five-glass storm drain repair that was funded with, that is funded with $1.2 million KEL OES grants, of which there is a local match grant, as well as I-283 regional stormwater capture projects with approximately $1.1 in EPA and state funding. There were also, I would like to note, urgent needs that occurred recently. The San Bruno Avenue Hillside Slope Repair Project within Crestmore Canyon costs about $1 million for the city and county park and Crystal Springs repair. It's estimated cost about $450,000. These unanticipated costs do put pressure on the General Fund reserve, because what is not grant-funded is supplemented with the General Fund. Our regulatory landscape also just becomes more challenging. We have been installing trash capture projects, and we adopted a green infrastructure plan that encourages the installation of buyer retention and public right-of-way. Staff worked hard to retain a positive fund balance by the end of this fiscal year. However, a negative fund balance is. However, a negative fund balance is projected to commence the following year with no end in sight unless additional dedicated revenues come into this fund. Next slide please. Again, total revenues fairly flat as well as operating. There were some increases due to interdepartmental allocations. There were some CIP and debt proceeds that, that shows the balance and those are the ending fund balances for this year and the next fiscal year. Notable accomplishments include a coordinated emergency response, the stability work at San Bruno Avenue and working to, to repair a storm pipe failure near county park in Crystal Springs. This does not however include the thirty million dollars in infrastructure improvements that are identified in the storm drain master plan. Staff, operations staff did work to coordinate multiple storm drain spot repairs, picked up trash and debris at one thousand twenty three locations as of March twenty twenty one, two largest homeless encampments and two Cal trans lots. They maintained self serve, the self serve sandbagging station and completed approximately four thousand feet of culvert inspection. And that concludes my portion of the enterprise fund.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you very much for your report. I, I'm having a lot of trouble, and this could be just, it's likely because this is my first time doing this process through the budget. I'm having a lot of trouble reconciling the, the, the tables with the graphs. So it, it would happen on all, on all three, the, the water, wastewater and stormwater, where this graph implies what the revenues and expenditures are in each year and then followed up by a table that show completely different numbers. So I, I, I'm not understanding the way that these are constructed and it's, and, and it's painting a, a wrong picture in my head when I'm looking at the graphs.
I did have finance assess me with those.
You could, you could choose any of them because it happened at all three.
Yeah, Mr. Ritchie, just, Mr. Hamilton, yeah, finish up and then, well, he was finishing and kind of giving you an example or two. Go ahead, Mr. Hamilton.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just want to see, it's like, for example, here on the wastewater enterprise, we see total operating revenues of almost eighteen million for, in the, in the twenty twenty one, twenty two and expenditures of ten million. If we go to the, the graph for wastewater. The expenditures are up at thirty four million and the revenues are, I guess, down around the seventeen. So is, is this because of the capital stuff?
Yes, yes. It includes both capital.
Part of this budget, not part of this area of the budget. And that, and that happened on all, in all three enterprises?
Yes.
Okay. Really hard, it's really, it's really hard to follow because it paints, it paints a very different picture. At least in my head, what's, what's actually happening.
Councilmember Hamilton, what we can do in the future is add a revenue and expenditure graph that is solely operations. All of the graphs show the fund because what it's intended to show is the overall health of the fund.
Sure.
Includes both operating and capital expenditures. But when you're, when we talk on the next slide, which is solely about, when you look at just the operating revenues and expenditures, that's not shown in the graph. And what we can do in the future is to add a graph to all of these that separate, that shows the fund health, but add a graph that's, that just shows the interplay between operating, revenues and expenditures.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, and Councilmember Hamilton, it, it is frustrating the first year or probably two of looking at these graphs, but it takes a while. Say, thank you Director Ritchie. I, I caught that the stormwater staff are charging their time to San Bruno Response. I haven't heard it directly that way. And so you're telling me that for all the pickups and the homeless encampment cleanup, that the funds were coming out of stormwater?
Let me go back to my notes. Um, I do have Deputy Director Bosch, I was wondering if he could let into the room?
And I, and I guess my concern there is, I understand, street sweeping is stormwater, a direct connection, but maybe not some of the other bulkier pickups that, that's not going to go into the stormwater, like a sofa or a refrigerator that gets picked up and perhaps the funds should not be charged to stormwater, but to something else.
I am wondering if I accidentally hold streets. Um, actually.
Uh, Javon, if Deputy Director Dennis Bosch, who oversees the stormwater, Dennis, will you address the councilmember's question and then I, I can fill in?
Yeah. Deputy Director Dennis Bosch, Maintenance and Operations, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Yeah, for San Bruno Response, it is part of the streets. The, the problem is, is streets and stormwater are within one division when we're talking about the employees. So basically, when, when San Bruno Response comes into the garbage complaints or advisements that you said, Vice Mayor Medina, streets staff go out and they take care of that. It is charged towards the appropriate fund. There are times where if, if something, you know, goes onto a storm drain or if something, you know, depending upon San Bruno Response, if there's flooding during, you know, inclement weather, then that, that can be, or, or is basically charged towards that. But in a sense, it's streets and stormwater personnel are of the same division.
Fine, thank you for that. Being in the same division, but of charging to different accounts. But, but I, I, I'll let staff figure that out, work that out a little bit. I have another question. For, for the future at some point, and not now, if, if council could be updated on the percentage of water and sewer mains that have been replaced so far, ongoing, since we've, we've been actively replacing our water and our sewer mains. If, if we could have an update, I know it's not very much considering the, the miles of, of water and sewer that we have, but it is still important, I think enough that we understand that there's a lot to do. A lot has been done, yet a lot remains to be done. Thank you.
I'm, I'm not seeing any more questions at this time?
So if we have no more questions, I'll invite City Net Services Director Sandeep Krishnamurthy to present on the City Net Services budget.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sandeep Krishnamurthy. I'm the Director of San Bruno City Net Services. Here to present the budget for the coming year and the status of the fund. Can we go to the next slide? Yeah, City Net Services, in terms of an overview, has twenty budgeted full time employees. It focuses on providing broadband services, along with, of course, television and voice over IP, provides excellent customer care and support. It optimizes a delivery system which is frankly kind of old. It has recently launched a Wi-Fi internet service and it also provides commercial voice and data services along with Channel One, which is our own program channel focused on local origination programming, including such events as this evening's presentations and council meeting. The long range financial plan of City Net Services has us pretty much looking at being in the red through the twenty five, twenty six fiscal years, except there is a gradual reduction in the amount being added to the low. The way the Cable Enterprise Fund adds balances is through three methods, through capital investment, through financial payments made on behalf of City Net by the general fund and through the depreciation and amortization payments which carry over from past years. The point to note here is that the capital improvement projects for City Net was zeroed out in the nineteen twenty and twenty twenty one budgets and remains in that status going forward, except for specially sanctioned projects funded from elsewhere. In terms of the twenty twenty one amended budget, our beginning fund balance was projected to be at fourteen point five zero nine or four, fourteen point six million with operating revenues which have been amended to nine point four million, slightly under that, and operating expenditures projected to end at nine point seven million. The deficit projected is two hundred and ninety nine thousand and the CIP for the router project was to be paid at the rate of three hundred and fifty two thousand dollars with an additional two thousand dollars and change, leading to a total of CIP debt proceeds and equipment totaling out to three hundred and fifty four thousand, two hundred dollars. This would have left the ending fund balance at fifteen million, one hundred and sixty four thousand. The actual expended, estimated expenditures are supposed to be at nine point three six four million and the point to call out here is that it was originally projected to be at nine point nine million. We have brought down this amount by about six, six hundred thousand primarily due to an eight hundred thousand dollar savings in television content expenses. We project to end the year at a slight surplus of about thirty five thousand with ending fund balance of fourteen point four seven six million. The point to note here is that the debt fund proceeds that were to be paid by City Net is now going to be paid by the general fund and in terms of account or handling by accounts and finance, that amount is not shown against the loan balance for this year, but it will be next year when City Net is projected to be in a position to actually pay that amount. For twenty one, twenty two, projected revenues are at nine point eight million, but expenses projected at nine point four, slightly under nine point five million, leading to an operating surplus of a projected three hundred and thirty one thousand. The CIP debt proceeds and equipment, as I mentioned before, is to be paid by City Net and the total here would be four hundred and forty three thousand. So that would lead to a slight increase or what seems to be a slight increase in the loan balance, which would end out at fourteen point five eight eight million. So to call out the point regarding estimated actual operating expenditures for this year, it was nine point nine million in the original budget and we have brought that down to nine point three six four and are pretty optimistic about ending there, thanks to having saved eight hundred thousand in television content expenses and additional savings in pretty much every major spending area of the budget. Can we go to the next slide?
Yes, Andy, I just want to point out for council that, that eight hundred thousand is a annualized savings amount. I think we started receiving that midway through the year, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We, we accomplished that through viewership data based drops of Crown Four and Univision, which saves us twenty five thousand a month, starting in January twenty twenty one. And we also have additional savings accruing to us through television subscriber losses and also through renegotiations of certain other contracts. Notable budget changes, service level challenges. We plan to have an IPTV revenue stream coming into play, starting in the, in the next fiscal year. And what this means is our television business would essentially have both a traditional delivery method for a while and new IPTV based delivery method, which would be based on apps on Android and iOS and other formats. We propose to fund this through our operating revenues. One of the continuing challenges remains the aging fleet of our vehicles. Since we have zeroed out the CIP budgets to achieve as much of fiscal stability as we can, the youngest vehicle we currently have in our fleet is from two thousand and seventeen and they are aging with every passing year. The equipment across the entire system is in various stages of obsolescence. The hybrid fiber coax plant was, as an example, put in place in nineteen ninety eight. And while there have been upgrades to hidden equipment at various points in time, most of the equipment is old and is being replaced on an as needed basis, but it begs improvement in terms of a overall system upgrade to fiber itself. A key initiatives for the enterprise going forward is to identify funding, continue planning efforts for fiber to the home and upgrade Channel One to high definition. This is included in the budget to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Some operational statistics that we have, that the enterprise has navigated during the pandemic. In terms of internet usage, our average monthly or peak monthly usage pre pandemic was eight gigabytes and that's gone up to over seventeen, an increase of over a hundred percent. Our television usage has also gone up by over a hundred percent to about twenty five million minutes per hour a month. In our call center, we have been experiencing on an average of about three thousand calls a month, starting about two months ago, we have noticed a trending in, in the number of calls answered as opposed to calls abandoned and in terms of an improvement. This is most probably also due to the fact that we opened our office and front lobby to customers starting in the seventeenth of May. So undoubtedly, it'll continue getting better as time passes. We have had two hundred and thirty three thousand dollars of unpaid subscription bills and while it's not yet an uncollectible debt, we have been taking some proactive measures in this regard by having a new ACSR call and talk to these customers on a one on one basis, resulting in a collection of about thirty two thousand dollars to date of this total. And also, we have been referring customers who have some difficulty in making payments to state and federal utility bill assistance programs. One point to note here is that we have been approved as an eligible provider in the emergency broadband benefit program launched by the FCC and are listed on their website as of today. So we are now in a position to direct customers who have difficulty in making broadband payments to sign up through the Federal Communications Commission for this benefit, which would have us being able to offer them up to fifty dollars of broadband benefits per month per household. There is more to come in this regard on our website and through other sources of announcing the program to San Bruno's residents. Subscriber trends, we lost five hundred Subscriber trends, we lost five hundred subscribers from March of twenty-twenty through April of twenty-one. While this seems like a pretty high number, it's generally in line with the loss trends is being experienced across the nation, coming out at slightly under eight percent. While it's never good to lose a subscriber, any kind of subscriber, what we have noticed is that there has been a corresponding shift to internet users amongst our subscriber base or those that are left of it. In the seven thousand homes that we currently serve, we have over ninety-five percent of subscribers who get the internet through us. What this means is these are high slightly higher margin subscribers, and they feed into an improvement of our operational balance between revenues and expenses. In terms of the new rate card, which we launched in February of two thousand and nineteen, we have us, we have now, we now have thirty-seven percent of our subscribers on it, and this again implies a better operating margin, so we actually end up making money on a per subscriber basis. Can we go to the next slide? In terms of future CityNet study session, staff is planning an updated study session on CityNet, and the current timing is quarter one of next year, the next fiscal year, sometime in August or September. This is based on several works in progress, which include such things as the finalization of the CityNet Revenue Study, which was undertaken by a consulting firm, and a business plan audit of the fiber business plan, as recommended by the city auditor. And we also include several efforts that are underway to research federal and state grants. There's been a spate of announcements announcing infrastructure band grants available from the federal level to build out broadband throughout the country. And we are exploring ways and means to apply for these grants, and if possible at all, find ways of securing funds from the federal government, both for our own footprint and also to help expand our service outside the San Bruno CityNet area. Which brings us to the last point, we have had some exploratory discussions in terms of regional fiber and internet expansion. This brings me to the end of this section on CityNet. I'll be happy to answer questions if any.
Question from colleagues? First, we'll go to Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you very much for for this presentation. It's it's been difficult, and the efforts to control costs, costs is appreciated. I have a revenue question. In the revenue summary on page two hundred fifteen, what where where does the city pay? The city of San Bruno pays CityNet Services? How much how much does it cost to provide internet service to our city?
Okay, as of last year, it costs the city twenty-one thousand dollars, sorry. It costs this city the cost of one of a one gigabit circuit, and it's an internal payment between I T and the city. So the I T department pays CityNet twenty-one hundred dollars a month for one gigabit wholesale connected.
Is that on is that on any of these line items in in and we can I can get this later, I just was going through and?
It would not be separately called out, it would be part of the internet revenues.
Okay, because the inter internal service allocations and interdepartment charges is almost nine hundred nine hundred thousand?
That's the outflow from CityNet for being a department within the city. So this is what we provide to the pool. The city collects to defray costs across the city services, across the spectrum of services it provides.
And and just for a relative value that CityNet provides to our city, could you estimate what it would cost to obtain the internet 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 service from an outside vendor?
It would be several times what we charge the city. It's difficult to put a number because that number seems to keep moving upwards. But if if all the services were to be obtained on a commercial basis, it would be many times higher, and I base this on A T and T's per-business line charge of about nine hundred dollars for one gigabit service to one small business. So we don't have one small business, we have a city with many departments to serve.
Understood, and thank you for being able to pull that math really, really quick. And and as for looking at your target in the number of households increasing from seven thousand to seven thousand one hundred and fifty, where where is that coming from?
It's coming from primarily the new launch of I P T V services that we have being positioned right now. It's going to take several months to actually get that service in shape and launched. But the reason we believe it's going to add services as opposed to the general environment of losing traditional television customers is because of the additional functionalities we seek to provide through Roku devices, through I O S and Android apps, and also because of the fact that we would still be one of the, if not the only player in the city to be able to offer live sports and news coverage.
And and what was the marketing budget?
The marketing budget is
Pretty low.
Amongst, it's pretty low, it's spread into a few buckets. We have an other services budget of about sixty thousand dollars. We have community promotion of about ten to fifteen thousand. And we tend to keep a rather low profile in our outreach, simply because a lot of the marketing efforts we could undertake in terms of mass media usage would be very inefficient, given that we serve only one zip code. If you were to serve a broader footprint, it might make more sense to take ads in the likes of a San Antonio Journal or something that has a broader reach.
And and when staff or I'm sorry, when a new new customer signs up for water, are they handed a a brochure or is there any promotion at that moment?
We we have brochures available at the counter when people come in to sign up at the city itself. We have started the practice at the suggestion of our city manager to place welcome packets in new developments. But we have not had a consistent program to offer this in every packet given to every water customer.
Right, and and I think that's something that it's hard to really expand your business if you're not going to do some promotion.
Completely agree.
And however, however, we can accomplish that, we have to give you the budget to do to do so.
I would only caution on one aspect. One, I I have my eye on the fiscal control aspect of things to keep it to keep costs under control. And two, on the relative inefficiencies of going very broad in a marketing campaign, given the small footprint we serve. And the third being that since we are now currently in the process of switching horses, so to speak, in television delivery from traditional to I P T V, we have taken a cautious approach towards doing anything right now as opposed to going out with more of a more of a push soon as we launch I P T.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Through the mayor, if I can just add on to that, because these are significant conversations and we've had some internal discussions. And so Director Christian Murphy did mention the door hanger program that we launched internally and and begun a door hanger package for some of the the new developments. What we are also exploring internally connected to CityNet, but also general city services is a welcome package that can be provided to new people that move into the community. And currently, we're exploring ways to do that. We've talked about when people set up a a new utility account, but oftentimes, that's that's also too late. Because by the time you're setting up your waters or and you're moving from a a place where maybe you had A T and T, you may just port over your A T and T. And so we're we're we want to explore partnerships with our local realtor offices. So when people are buying new homes, they can be informed of if you're buying in San Bruno, there are San Bruno CityNet, as well as partnering with our N D Us, our multi-unit developments, where they have internal information when they are leasing out a unit that would that they they provide to potential tenants. And so we're exploring those, partly of CityNet, but it's also a sort of welcome to San Bruno package that would would have the latest recreation guide as well as a a general brochure about all things San Bruno.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Director Christian Murphy, for your your presentation. I've got two questions. The first one is, in the in the the introductory letter to the budget, it was stated that the twelve point four million dollar fiber to the home project would require the the full funding upfront. And I'm I I don't I'm curious as to why that would be and why we would be able to phase it in by, you know, neighborhoods or or whatnot. Why would the why would the twelve point four million be required all upfront in order to do fiber fiber to the home throughout the city?
Well, the way the plan has been envisaged is it's a fairly quick rollout. And given the order cycles that are necessary to get the equipment in place for each successive phase, and there are seven phases, we would have to have quite a bit of the money contained within the twelve point four million to be committed fairly quickly into the early months of the build-out. The total build-out timeline is for twenty-four months. Most of the money to secure materials would be consumed pretty much by month fourteen or sixteen. And then the remainder would just be a deployment period for those funds.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question has to do with subscribers on the old rate cards. What what do we do to proactively? Do we do anything proactively coax people off of those old rate cards and onto the current ones? And if and if we aren't doing anything, you know, is it is it in isn't on the roadmap to start?
I'll start by addressing the second point, which is, is it on the roadmap? And the answer is yes. And the reason the answer is yes is because of the planned launch of I P T V services. We have a lot of customers in the old rate card who are television-heavy consumers and not as much of the internet. So we want to be sure we have a plan in place where we can tell them you can move this package and actually end up saving fifteen dollars a month or twenty dollars a month, whatever the final number is, as compared to your current price. So that's one. The second is, given the pandemic and the level of TV usage increasing amongst our customers, we have not gone out and made a concerted push to get them off of the rate card, because again, it comes back to the point about launching I P T V. If we get them off the old rate card, what do we get them on to if they're not heavy consumers of the internet? And our new rate card is internet-led, so it's it essentially takes the internet, it packages it with local television channels. And it may certainly appeal to the to the working family demographic and to the younger people in San Bruno, but to our older customer base, of which we have a fair sample, may not find it that attractive. That's the reason we've not done very much till now.
Okay, great, thank you.
There are questions from colleagues? Not seeing any hands up at this time. I'm sorry, Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I'm just curious if you if there are demographics as far as which, you know, maybe age groups that are that have San Bruno cable or using San Bruno internet, I'd be curious to see the demographics.
We can we can try and get some to you. What I can say off the top of my analysis over the or several recent periods is we're starting to skew a little lower, but we're not seeing a big uptake yet in the younger demographic in San Bruno. Our subscriber base still tends to skew forty-five plus.
Okay, that's where I would piggyback off of what Councilmember Medina says about advertising. I also just wanted to say that, did you say at the beginning of your presentation that the was it Telemundo that you saved twenty-five thousand dollars a month?
It's Univision and Crown Four.
Okay, wow.
Those two, those two collectively cost us twenty-five thousand dollars in content fees per month.
Okay, and then my last question was around the funds where people are behind on their bills. Is there are there any services that are being shared right now with the residents of San Bruno, like through a mailer, through the city manager's newsletter? Not necessarily, I guess, upcoming because the because we're at the beginning of June, but to say if you got behind on your payments, here are some resources that are there to help you.
We actually got an approved letter mailed, then we followed up with a second notice, and now we have a person calling one-on-one to coax people to to call in and establish a payment plan, without which we have started downgrading people to different lower tiers of service, especially especially when it comes to television service. And the reason is, we are only a middleman in television content delivery. So while we may or we incur a cost of almost a hundred dollars for an expanded basic subscriber, if it doesn't show up as a payment to us, it's a net loss of a hundred dollars.
But I mean, are there is there any assistance outside of a payment plan, which is directly with San Bruno? Like any additional assistance that's available through the state to help individual or the county to help individuals get up to date with their with their payment plans?
Yes, there is. There is a state program which helps people who have trouble paying the rent and the utility bills get help from the state itself. And as I said during my presentation, we just qualified today to become an eligible provider in the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program established by the F C C. And this allows each household to receive up to fifty dollars worth of internet connectivity on a monthly basis. And this program has about three point two billion dollars of funding for the whole of the United States and will last as long as there is money to be dispersed.
And just in addition to what the director said, the answer to hasn't been included in the city manager's newsletter is yes, as well as our social media posts. And what Sandeep mentioned, which is we are, we know who are behind on their bills, and at this point, we're doing dedicated outreach to those individuals to encourage them to apply for the state and federal utility payment assistance programs, which would help them out with utility bills as well as if they're behind in rent. And so at this point, it's a dedicated outreach for those state and federal grants.
Any other questions from colleagues at this time? All right, thank you, Director, for your report.
You're welcome.
The the question here is, does the city council desire a a break, which is why that slide was built in? We do have, I I believe, thirteen additional slides left. My memory and math is correct. Yes, there is less, there's a total of sixty slides and we're on forty-nine, so we have less than that. We have we have about ten slides left.
What is your expectation on what the ten slides might take? Just give me a ballpark as far as time.
Sure, I I think it is, it is a few divisions. It is our central garage, our building and facilities, tech and technology departments. I think the presentation of all of those would would be approximately twenty minutes. Questions from the city council, I I hazard not to guess.
I I wasn't going to ask you to predict that. No, just just the presentations, and I would I would say at this time, let's proceed, please.
Okay, so our internal service funds are the central garage, building and facilities, technology and self-insurance. In this presentation, we do have the directors that are responsible for those divisions of central garage, building and facility and technology ready to present. Ready to present. The internal service fund balances that are are shown above are for they are operating fund balances, these are not. The reserve fund balances for our garage and our our which cares for our vehicles as well as sleep. It is also not the reserve fund balance, the fund balance that covers building and facilities or technology, these are the operating. Fund balances and then we can step through these presentations and the first up is. Central garage, intro director, Richie.
A central garage overview. There are two mechanics. Which also includes portions of management and support staff. Staff provide employees with operable and well maintained vehicles by performing preventative maintenance and repairs. They also provide vehicle acquisition disposal services as well as support services. Next slide, please. Accomplishments include implementing new workflow and garage management software, including fleet service supports portal. Auction surplus vehicles, equipment and reintroduce new fund source for equipment reserve. Updated garage operating processes, streamlined parts ordering, improved. Interdepartmental communication. Strategic initiatives include improving tooling and part storage. Reduced surplus, continuing to maintain and repair one hundred forty six service vehicles. Researching fleet electrification and review life cycles. I do want to note that. Budget enhancement requests include stripping and re-coding the garage bay floors with paint, et cetera. And toolbox and equipment storage and workstation. Baseline budgeting does mean that we're unable to restore prior budget cuts to supplies, contract repair, hazmat and laundry services. Next division is building and facilities. Next slide please. This. This division includes two maintenance technicians. One field supervisor, one custodial leader and four custodians. In addition to portions of management administrative staff. Staff performs facilities and building maintenance and repairs proactive and reactive response to building repairs. And custodial cleaning of all city facilities and overseeing implementation of the ADA transition plan. Next slide, please. Accomplishments include completing completion of the moved division to public works. Implementation of new work order facility maintenance management system and work request portal. Managed installation of city hall video security camera systems. As well know, last year was. Felt a lot of challenges. This division provided COVID response, including Plexigas barriers. Air purifiers, temperature scanners. As well as office conversions at the fire station, city hall, commuter services and firemen's hall. Strategic initiatives include continuing maintenance to repair of cities buildings. Continuing to implement ADA transition plan and installing HVAC at police, firemen's hall, library as well as fire flow security. Additional budgets. Augmentations to enhancements to include maintenance for library roof spot repairs. Interior paint, pressure washing exterior walls and sidewalks at city facilities. HVAC roof contract maintenance repaying generator at Arbor Court. Door and entryway and lock key service uniform cleaning. Status quo baseline budgeting has meant that. There's limited ability for enhanced facility infrastructure maintenance and CIP backlog remains. That concludes. These two internal service charges.
Not seen any hands up, so I'm gonna say why don't we proceed, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Sandeep Krishna Murthy, Director of City Net and City IT. And here to present this evening. Proposed budget for city's IT division. Can we go to the next slide? The IT division of the city comprises three full-time employees. Per budget, point to note here, we currently have two and a half plus. Full-time employees, all of them extremely dedicated, very talented and committed to the cause of IT in the city. The half plus comes in the person of our new interim IT manager. We've had two failed recruitments to recruit a person on a full-time basis for this job and have finally. Chosen to go with this gentleman who is retired and vacant. And is therefore not available full-time to the city. He does bring a wealth of talent and dedication to the job and is very much busy with various IT projects. At this time. The task of the city's IT division is to manage and maintain the city's core IT infrastructure. Maintain the network and data security. Man the centralized service desk. Manage business applications and management and provide solutions management to. Pretty much every department across the city. Manage the phones for the city's phone network and also oversee the website development and administration on a day-to-day basis. Can we go to the next slide? Thank you. In terms of budgets, the amended budget for twenty twenty one was a million and fifty eight thousand dollars. Of which the year is supposed to end at a million and fifty thousand spent, leading to a surplus of seven thousand six hundred dollars. For twenty one twenty two, the departmental revenues are projected at nine hundred and seven. With expenditures projected at a million hundred and thirteen thousand, leading to a. What seems to be a deficit of two hundred and six thousand. And the first point in the notes, you will see that the CARES Act funds. Paid for securities enhancements in twenty twenty one to the tune of two hundred and seventy two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. And the city plans to use. As appropriate or for appropriate use projects, funds to be received from the American Rescue Plan Act to make up the deficit. Of two hundred and six thousand dollars in twenty one twenty two. The big projects on the annual for the city's IT division include. The city's website and the fourth system, both of which are due to be changed in the coming fiscal. Primarily because they both reached their end of support and end of life scenarios. New digital tools for conduct of the city's business continue to be enhanced or introduced. Based on providing greater functionality in the digital realm to the city's citizens as well as to the city's departments. A notable example of that would be the E Tractor project, which involves CED and finance and IT. Many IT functions are moving to the cloud within the city for increased security and these are. Adding to ongoing expenses, leading to the slight increase in the budgeted amount requested for expenditures in twenty one twenty two. At the same time, many IT systems also reaching end of life and end of support. I had just mentioned the city's website and the phone systems are two of those prime examples, there are more systems coming into play. As time passes on and these will need to be changed up. To be more modernized and up to date. Next slide. That brings me to the end of my section, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from colleagues at this time? Not seen any hands, then if we could proceed?
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentations tonight. Again, the the last. The the next budget meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. And at that meeting, we will review the C the proposed CIP budget as well as review. Revised recommendations related to enhancements based on city council feedback last Tuesday. And so that that meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at five P M. And so that is Wednesday, June ninth.
Okay, if there's any members of the public that wish to ask questions or offer comments, if you could please raise your hand at this time. I did want to take a moment and thank, there is a few folks. From not just finance, but also in public works that are have been on the line this entire time. Being available and they're the ones behind the scenes, putting this budget together, so we want to thank them very much. Seeing no hands up, want to thank staff for their presentations and time and from everyone staying here through through the evening.